Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Board of Selectmen December 7, 2020 meeting. This is remote participation only. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. As I said, this is a remote participation meeting and it's important that we are all able to conduct the meeting the best to our ability, to allow for the presenters to be heard and to have public comments at the appropriate time. In order for you to comment, this is a reminder. If you are on the Teams meeting app, please use the raise and lower hand device. It is located on the bar on your screen and I will see it and notify you when to speak. For those who are just calling in by phone and unable to use the hand lower raise device, I will call for you in a roll. Simply call out your name and I will place you in a queue to speak and call in you at the appropriate time. So before we start the meeting, I'm going to ask that everyone mute their audio and disable their video until time of present or comment. We will begin the meeting by taking a roll call of the Board of Selectmen in order to declare that we have a forum, a quorum, sorry. Okay, so a roll call. Selectmen Kokolas?
Present.
Selectmen Metters?
Present.
Selectmen Dinkins?
Present.
Selectmen Nagastro? And Selectmen Castro, I think you're muted.
I'm not muted, I'm just badly connected, present.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a quorum. Okay, the first order of business is to, we'll go to the meeting minutes, is to accept the meeting minutes of November 24, 2020. Do we have a motion to accept those meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Dean, second. Dean, second.
Okay, all right. Are there any edits or additions to the, go ahead, Dean?
Yeah, just went on page four, under the public hearings, the first motion, it doesn't indicate who offered the motion, I think I did, this is on the motion by to approve.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's my only comment.
Okay. Any other edits or anything? Okay, I'll take a roll call to approve the meeting minutes of November 24. Peter?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, those have been approved, meeting minutes of November 24. The next order of business is to approve the meeting minutes of December 1, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, any edits or additions to that? Dean?
Yeah, I have several, so I'll try to go through them.
Okay.
Second, it says plays the primary role as airport sponsor. I think you should add for the airport sponsor, strike a word out and have it read in, plays the primary role for the airport sponsor, because the commission is not the sponsor, the town is.
Okay.
The second, on 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, second line where it reads board's appointment of airport commissioners provides its some authority, I would suggest that the word authority be stricken and the words control substituted.
Okay.
The next paragraph, first sentence, two-thirds of the way in, the word stranding should be standing, standing committee. And then in the next paragraph, it's the second sentence, which starts in the third line, said the town manager has financial oversight authority. I'd like to add, because he did say this, and is the town's chief procurement officer.
Okay.
Is the town's chief procurement officer. I'm almost done, next page, page five up at the top. He noted that a town general bylaw, I think it's, we should insert chapter 100, I think that is the reference.
Okay.
And then on page seven, at the bottom, very last sentence, Attorney Costello said there is no obligation to the current plan that is in the process of being updated. I don't have an edit, but I just wanted to bring it to Shauna's attention. Did he really say that? Did he say something akin to that? I'm not, I don't remember his exact words, it just struck me as a little stronger than what he said, but I could be wrong, I should check the record. And then there were two more, page eight, fourth paragraph, really one sentence, it was pointed out that the airport commission currently consists of four homeowners. I would put, insert between the word non-pilot and the word.
Dean, could you repeat that? Dean, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This is fourth paragraph on page eight. It was pointed out that the airport commission currently consists of four homeowners. I would insert after the word four, the word non-pilot. Non.
Yeah.
Can we see that?
Okay, yeah.
So, buddy, get, my screen's freezing up, I may have to call in.
Why don't, Dean, why don't you try disabling your video and seeing if that helps?
Okay.
All right.
Okay. And the next, the next page, second paragraph, third line, which reads commission, while others are expressing concern, I would like to strike the word others and substitute the word citizens. It was noted that citizens are expressing concerns about having pilots on the airport commission while citizens are expressing concern. I'm not sure they're necessarily not the same citizens, it was saying two different things.
Shauna, Shauna's hand is up, Dean, could you hold on just a second?
Yeah, he was just breaking up in the first edit and I did not catch where that was.
Okay.
On page, yeah. It was up at the top on the second line, plays the primary role as airport sponsor, I'd like to see if it plays the primary role for the airport. Is that the one you were missing?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We'll see how this goes, if, those are my, we'll see how it goes, if I have to, I'll have to call in.
Okay.
I had good connection, I was earlier.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Any other edits from the, on these meeting minutes? Jeff?
Yeah, just Dean's last edit, I might suggest the phraseology of it was noted that citizens are expressing concerns about having pilots on the airport commission while other citizens are expressing concerns that there is not enough aeronautical experience on the airport commission. I don't think it's necessarily the same citizens expressing the same concerns.
And the reason I didn't put the word other is I'm not necessarily, I don't think it's necessarily that there were different people saying this.
Yeah, okay, I would think there would be, but.
It was noted that some citizens are expressing concerns and while some citizens are expressing concern, put the word some in front of both.
Yeah, okay. That would be good, that'd be great. I have one other, I have one other stupid nit on them. Third paragraph on page seven is just, third line up from the bottom of the paragraph, Attorney Costello said the board's purview over, actually above that, I'm sorry, he questioned whether the board could extend its purview into areas about the runway approach. It's just, need to add as, an O on into, that's all. No biggie. Those were long minutes, those were very well done for a very complicated set of minutes.
Yes. Peter?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add one other on page eight, on the second paragraph from the bottom, the, let's see, the third line down, one, two, third line down in the middle of the sentence, it was stated that it was understandable.
Okay. All right, any other edits or additions? And we'll take a vote to approve. Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Can everybody maybe mute their paper shuffling noises a little? It's kind of hard to hear, not sure who's got that going on.
Oh.
Shireen, you're muted.
We're all on mute.
Yeah, sorry. So I just, that's the way the meeting's gonna go tonight. I just wanted to review our protocol and whatnot for, for those who have never been on our calls before, for the Zoom, for the Teams meeting, and just go over how the meeting is gonna run. So our next agenda item is a public announcement and agenda item request portion, and this is where meeting attendees may make a general non-deliberative amount, announcement or request an item to be considered for an upcoming meeting. The second agenda item we will move to is new business. We'll first hear from the, a COVID update from Dr. Dunkinson and our town manager, Goldsmith. The public will have an opportunity to ask questions after their presentations. The next, we're gonna hear Route 28 West Chatham project update from the director of the DPW. And the public, again, will have an opportunity to ask questions on the presentation, but I do want to note that the agenda item simply says West Chatham roadway or West Chatham project update, but inclusive in the memo and issues, the presentation are updates on other projects, roadway projects. So if people have a question, I'm gonna, we'll entertain those questions. Then we're gonna move on to our public comment period, and this is where any participant may comment on an agenda item listed in our business agenda items section, which tonight we're considering a liquor license renewal, request for change of Sunday hours for Bluefin Sushi and Saki Bar, request from our community housing partnership committee to change membership, and a FY 2022 budget policy discussion with a review of Chatham 365 priorities, and lastly, consider prohibition of sales of nip bottles. So we, that's what, that's what you can comment in the public comment section. After that, we'll move into our consent calendar item for a vote, and then we ourselves will move into our business agenda as a board, and we'll have a board discussion on the items that I just listed previously. After that is all done, we'll do a public comment period again on those, on those agenda items, and finally, we'll vote to adjourn. So it's my goal that this meeting is no more than two hours and that we can get our business started with our first agenda item, which is not agenda item, but a public announcement's an agenda item request. So if you, any of the board have, I see Peter and then Corey. So Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, just came in on an email just a little while ago, it's the new power supply rates by K-Cloud Compact, and it is the winter time and they normally go up in the winter, good news is they didn't go up as much as they have previously, but the residential rate is now 9.99, excuse me, it's 11 points, 11.85 compared to 9.99, 9.98 cents before. What that, I'm honest with you, is about a $5 to $6 increase a month, and we had about a, oh, we had almost an eight or nine, 10, 10 or 10, $10 decrease over the summer. The commercial rate is 11.6 cents versus a 9.913, and it's about the same kind of difference. And I'll just make a comment again, like I always do, that these rates reflect an increase all through New England wide in our electricity market prices due to the price of natural, our natural gas supply, which runs a lot of our electric plants, and even though the rest of the country has a lot of natural gas, we have small pipes coming into New England. So that's, that's one thing. And the other comment I was gonna make is, we just talked about our minutes from, from last week, and that was, that was a very informative meeting. Council, I think, gave us a kind of broad discretion in some ways, and other ways was very firm in what he thought was, what the responsibilities of each of the, each of us are. I just would make a comment that I received a number of emails from people, some were appreciative of it and understood and said, okay, we get it, but these guys can still have some oversight, and others were not, which you could kind of expect, and they questioned the legally question you had. So anyway, I think, I think meetings like that on issues that are important, we need to keep on doing as single, single agenda items. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share with the board, I received an email a little over an hour ago from Superintendent Scott Carpenter. It was addressed to current and future student families with specific focus on Chatham Elementary School. And long story short, a survey is being sent out, and they're looking to get feedback on potential actions for the elementary school, with three specific options to get, receive feedback. Option one is to offer a redistricting of a subset of Harwich students into the Chatham Elementary School. Another item is to create an upper and lower elementary school structure, so that certain grades would be held at Chatham and certain grades would be held in Harwich. Or all, and then a third option is to have a under-one-roof option where all Chatham and Harwich residents, K through four, would be housed under one facility. Of course, there's also the no-action option. This survey is gonna be open until December 15, and of course, any, you know, scenarios that would require action would need to amend our current Montomoy Regional Agreement. And just to be clear, we're gonna need input from both towns, Board of Selectmen, School Committee, and town meeting action from both communities. So this is a very long process involved, but this email, this came out an hour or so ago, and I will keep everyone updated. I know the town manager's aware of this, and we're gonna keep this on our forefront to see where this goes.
Thank you, Corey. I know Selectmen Dinkins is part of a conversation that's happening, and we'll be hearing more about this within the next, you know, several weeks when we'll start to discuss. Jeff, do you wanna weigh in? You're muted, Jeff.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Corey and Shireen, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's an important issue. I've asked Shireen to, after we get the survey results, have Asherine and Jill to tee up a kind of a special meeting, a one item, if you will, one subject meeting, similar to our meeting on the airport and affordable and attainable housing with Scott Carpenter presenting his very excellent, I believe, presentation on this issue. It is, it's a, you know, major issue for the schools and for the town and for our elementary students and parents, so more to come, but we're all, we're on board in addressing the issue and getting it teed up here and getting information out for parents and soliciting feedback from our community, as, as we've done on many other burning issues here in the near, near past. So that's forthcoming, and that'll be an agenda item forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Dean, I see your hands up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a, an agenda item request effectively. This has to do with the upcoming hearing on the appeal from the applicant to the historic Business District Commission regarding the Montomoy Theater property that is slated on our upcoming agenda for the 22nd of December. There are three items that I'd like to see taken care of in advance of that hearing. First, I'd like to see if we could have a site visit for the selectmen to, if those of us who wish to view the premises would have an opportunity. I know I have only been in one or perhaps half of one, one and a half of those buildings. Secondly, if there is a decision from the HBDC, I think we should get a copy of that, we should ascertain if there is such a written decision, and that should be part of the record. And the third, I'd like to request the advice of town council or the opinion of town council as to what the standard of review is for the Board of Selectmen in taking up an appeal for, on a decision of the HBDC. So I think if those three, those three pieces should be procedurally put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. I just want to make a note, when I opened the meeting, I think I welcomed everybody to the December 7 meeting. I should have said December 8, so I just want to note that. Note that for the record. Okay, so are there any remote participants that have a public announcement or agenda item request? Please raise your hand. Any of the call-ins have a, have an agenda item request or public announcement? Please speak out. Okay, I'm not seeing any. All right, then we're gonna move on to our first agenda item. Thank you, everyone, which is a coronavirus, COVID-19 update from Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Robert Dunkinson. Dr. Bob?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay. So it's been a busy couple of days here on the COVID-19 front, so let me, I'll try not to take too much time, but there is a fair amount of material to brief the board as well as members of the public on. So in terms of gross numbers tonight, worldwide, we are currently a little over 68 million cases of COVID-19, and we are over 1,553,000 deaths. In the United States, we are currently over 15 million cases. And the next closest country to the US in terms of cases is India at 9.7 million. So where that gap had earlier this fall been narrowing, that gap between the US and the next closest country is actually now widening. In the US, as of this afternoon, we had 285,643 deaths, and the next closest country to the US was, or is, Brazil at 177,000. So that gap is also widening now. Where earlier this fall, the trend was for those gaps to close, and at one point, we thought that maybe some other country would catch up to the US, but that is no longer the case. In Massachusetts, as of 5:00 PM this afternoon, we are at 263,447 cases of COVID-19, and we are now at 11,076 deaths. In Barnstable County, for confirmed cases, we are currently at 3,554. That is an increase. That is an increase of forty cases since yesterday. And since your meeting last week, the number of cases in Barnstable County has increased by four hundred and twenty-five. In terms of the number of deaths, we currently in Barnstable County are at one hundred and ninety-eight, which is an increase of one death since yesterday. And since your meeting last week, the number of deaths in the county has increased by six. In Chatham, we are currently at fifty-seven cases cumulatively since the pandemic began. And that is an increase of three since your meeting last week. And in terms of the number of deaths, unfortunately, tonight, I have to report that we have had another, another death of a Chatham resident to bring our total up to three. We were notified last week of a COVID-19 case involving a Chatham resident, and I subsequently learned that individual has passed away. Whether it was directly related to COVID or not, I can't say. But because of the fact they were tested and, and indicated positive by PCR last week, there's a strong likelihood that COVID at least played some role in the deaths. So unfortunately, we are now up to three. In terms of the age demographic of Chatham cases since the beginning, it has not changed substantially. The zero to thirty-nine-year-old group, if you will, currently accounts for thirty-six point nine percent of our cases. The forty to sixty-nine-year-olds account for thirty-five percent. And the seventy-year-old and up demographic currently accounts for twenty-eight percent, which is held pretty steady. The largest demographic that we have is the twenty to twenty-nine-year-olds, which account for twenty-one point one percent of our cases overall. And that's held pretty steady, that they've been the, the demographic that's accounted for the largest number of cases in Chatham. In terms of hospitalizations on the Cape, as of Sunday evening, Cape Cod Hospital had fourteen individuals with COVID-19 and five people in the ICU. And Falmouth Hospital had five cases of COVID-19 with one person in the ICU. And that's the most up-to-date information that I have on hospitalizations for the Cape Hospital specifically. I can tell you that during the governor's press conference today, he indicated that hospitalizations, both in terms of general hospitalizations as well as ICU cases, are dramatically increasing across the Commonwealth to the tune of over a hundred percent in a recent week or so. More locally, we have had a number of local cases in the last five or six days. We had one case that involved an employee both at, who worked both at the Squire and at Blue Fins. And subsequent to that, Blue Fins has advised us of two more positive cases. So we currently have three positive cases involving Blue Fins and one positive case involving the Squire. The Squire has closed through December twenty-second in response to those cases, as well as the overall increase in cases Cape-wide. Blue Flynn, Blue Fins was closed last week from Thursday through Sunday. They reopened on Monday. They did bring an outside third-party tester in on Friday and tested all their employees. And that's what resulted in identification of two additional cases involving Blue Fins employees. We were also notified over the weekend of an additional case at, of a case at CBI. And then on Monday, we were notified of an additional case at CBI involving, both cases involving staffers, not members of the public, if you will. Those individuals have been quarantined. CBI closed their restaurant and their main kitchen on Saturday for the requisite twenty-four hours and undertook the deep cleaning as called for in the Board of Health Regulation. And they also did the public notification, as did the Squire and Blue Fins. CBI moved their food service operation to the Beach House Grill, which was closed at the time because of the time of year. So they were able to maintain food service for those guests that they had in the, in, over the weekend. And then this time of the year, CBI is generally closed Monday, Tuesday, and I think Wednesday, anyway. So that situation as well is under control. And then over the weekend, we were also notified of two staff members at Liberty Commons that had tested positive. They have gone ahead and done all the appropriate contact tracing, and a number of staff in there are now quarantining because they were identified as close contacts. And in addition, Liberty Commons has now increased their testing. Because of the time of year and the surge, they were required by the state to be testing weekly all their staff. They have actually accelerated that testing and are now testing pretty much every couple of days, all their staff people, to make sure that the, that there's no spread beyond those two staffers who were identified. I have not received any word that any residents have tested positive or that there's been any additional staffers tested positive beyond the two that we were notified, notified about over the weekend. And then just a couple of other things to bring you up to speed on. Some of this you're probably already aware of. Effective yesterday, the State Department of Public Health issued new quarantine guidance. As you may remember, quarantine guidance is for those people that have been identified as close contacts to someone who's tested positive for COVID-19. And we use the term isolation for individuals that have actually tested positive. But the DPH did release new quarantine guidance that pretty much brings Massachusetts in line with some updated guidance that came out of CDC last Thursday, Friday. So there are now basically three levels of quarantine. One level is the same fourteen-day quarantine period that has been in effect since last spring. So basically, you quarantine for a full fourteen days, and then you can come out of quarantine on day fifteen. And that is really for individuals that experienced any symptoms during the quarantine period. Even if they did at some point have a negative COVID test, they still need to stay in quarantine for a full fourteen days. The state has now updated their guidance to provide for a ten days of quarantine. If an individual has not exhibited any symptoms, but, you know, they were a close contact, but they themselves have not had any symptoms, and they will conduct the routine monitoring for any symptoms for the full fourteen days. No test is necessary under that scenario. And if an individual meets those two criteria, they can come out of quarantine on day eleven. So they have to go through the full far, full quarantine for ten days. And that, under those conditions, there is about a one percent chance of disease development in those individuals. So after the ten-day quarantine period, there's about a one percent chance that they could come down and start exhibiting symptoms of the disease. And then the third level is a seven-day quarantine period. And this is for individuals that have had a PCR or antigen test taken on day five or later, and that test is negative. And again, the individual has not had any symptoms, and they will agree to conduct active monitoring for symptoms through day fourteen. And so in that case, if they meet all those criteria, someone could come out of quarantine on day eight. So they would have to go through seven days of quarantine, but then on day eight, they could come out. And that scenario carries about a five percent risk of disease, disease development. But DPH was confident that these could be implemented successfully in the Commonwealth. And it really provides an opportunity for those people that basically can't quarantine for full fourteen days, you know, because they need to work or they have family issues or whatnot. It's providing an opportunity for people to come out of those quarantine in shorter periods of time, provided they meet those criteria and provided they, they're, you know, they're aware of the risks involved with coming out of that quarantine early. So I just wanted to update you on that. And then the, starting on Friday, and this came out from the governor's conference yesterday, starting on Friday, hospitals will be curtailing inpatient elective procedures. And the goal there is to free up hospital beds and staff to deal with the ongoing surge in COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations. So starting on Friday, hospitals will curtail elective inpatient procedures. This does not apply to outpatient procedures or health screenings like colonoscopies, mammograms, pediatric well visits, and those kinds of things, because that doesn't affect hospitalizations and hospital bed availability, nor the availability of in-person hospital staff. So that takes effect this Friday. And then the other big news that came out today is effective on Sunday, the thirteenth, the entire state is rolling back to Phase Three, Step One. So as you probably know, Chatham and many other communities were in Phase Three, Step Two for the last month and a half or so, which allowed, you know, additional people in venues and whatnot. That is all being rolled back effective this Sunday at twelve oh one a.m. in response to the ongoing surge. And just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight in that rollback. Outdoor gatherings at event venues or public spaces is being rolled back to fifty people maximum. It wasn't a hundred people. It's being rolled back to fifty. And a number of indoor events, indoor theaters and performance venues, and some smaller indoor recreation activities like roller rinks or trampoline parks, which don't, we don't have any in Chatham, those are being outright closed. And then there's a number of other categories of operations where the capacity in those is being rolled back from fifty percent to forty percent, including places like gyms and health clubs, libraries, and museums. And there's a longer list, but those are some of the critical ones that I wanted to touch on. And then in restaurants, there's actually given me some fairly substantial changes in restaurants. Individuals will now have to wear masks at all times, except when they are actively eating. Prior to this, individuals would be able to come in and be seated and could remove their mask at that time. And then they had to put the mask back on when they got up and went to the bathroom or left the facility. Now patrons are going to be required to keep their mask on at all time unless they are actively eating. So if you're just sitting there waiting for the waitress or you've already ordered and you're just sitting there with the rest of your family, you will need to keep the mask on until the food arrives and you're actually eating. You know, that's a fairly substantial change, but the state felt it was necessary to protect both the patrons in the restaurant as well as the staff. The maximum number of people at tables is being rolled back as well. We are currently at ten people per table. Effective Sunday, that is being rolled back to six people, six people per table. And then the other big change, and this is a new one, there's going to be a ninety-minute time limit on people seated at tables. So when you come in and you sit down at the table, you will have to complete your meal and leave within ninety minutes. And that's really aimed at reducing people that are just kind of hanging out in restaurants, you know, and hopefully will reduce the spread. And then there's some other updates that are coming out to workplaces and gyms. Mainly, you're going to need now to wear a gym, yeah, wear a mask when you're in the gym at all times. There was some guide, the previous guidance had some distances set forth. And if you met those distances, you didn't necessarily need to wear a mask. Now you're going to be required to wear a mask at all times. And there's some additional guidance coming out on workplaces, like offices and whatnot. I don't think it's going to affect town offices at all because we're pretty well already doing what is in this guidance in terms of when masks are required and not. That's been kind of our policy, you know, over the entire course of this thing. So there will be some more detail coming out from the state and the sector-specific guidance, such as, you know, restaurant-specific guidance or museums. That is all in the process of being updated, and we should have that updated information hopefully later this week. But the state wanted to get this notice out to people in advance of Sunday's implementation date. So I think that's all I have at the moment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. I have a quick question. You, you mentioned that we had fifty-seven cases and the new cases. I can't remember what you said the new cases were for, for this week. But was that inclusive of the, of the restaurant staffers and, and Liberty Commons staffers? Or is that, are they people that live out of town and just businesses are reporting?
It's both. Some of the restaurant staffers are Chatham residents, and so they were included in that fifty-seven count. Other members, both the Liberty Commons and the various restaurants, are not Chatham residents. So they're being reported to us as they're required to do, but they don't, they're not included in our case count.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody, any of the board have a question for Dr. Dunkinson? Any questions? Okay. Does any of the remote participants have a question for Dr. Dunkinson? You can raise, raise your hand. Any of the people on the call have questions for Dr. Dunkinson? You may speak out. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Have any questions tonight? All right, thank you. Our next update is from our town manager, Jill Goldsmith. Hi, Jill. Are you on? You are on.
I am, I'm on, and I have a brief update, and then I'm going to turn it over to Alex to provide her quarterly update as well relating to COVID expenses. So with everything that Bob had just mentioned, I had notified staff today that the temporary staffing plan and in-person appointments at town offices, which have been paused since November thirtieth, are going to continue to be paused until the end of December. So town offices are open. Staff will be here to answer phones, email, there's drop-offs. And with the vestibles, we're able to leave materials. And if there's an emergency, certainly call the office, and we will make some accommodation. Other than that, we're, we're just working as we have. It's, it's very busy, surprisingly. And I did want to let the board know that the monthly reports have been posted directly to the website just with the meeting topics and agendas were pretty heavy. So October is posted, and in November will be within about a week or so. And that's all I have to report.
Any questions? Thanks, Jill. Any questions for Jill from the board? I don't see any. Any questions from the remote participants? Either raise your, raise your hand or call out, please. Okay, I'm not hearing any. Thank you, Jill. So we'll turn it over to Alex. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jill. Yes, one of the goals of the board was to receive a biweekly update on COVID expenditures and the year-to-date revenues, how we're doing during the pandemic. So I'll start with the revenue side, and I do have some good news to report. And we do report the tax collections in the monthly reports as reported by the Treasurer's Office. So as of November thirtieth, we've collected forty-nine point two one percent of the real estate and personal property taxes. And compared to last year, that's tracking a little bit ahead of last year. Last year, at the same time, we were forty-nine point zero four percent. So we're just about where we should be. So outstanding taxes for the first half, which were due on November second, we have outstanding of fifty point seven nine percent. Last year was fifty point nine six percent. The amount of taxes that we've received through November thirtieth, which includes OPEB and CPA surcharges, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-seven, sorry, thirty-eight million four hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. So again, you know, we don't see any decline there with the payments of taxes. As far as our local estimated receipts, which are items such as motor vehicle excise, the hotel motel tax, recreation charges, sewage charges, solid waste, all of those, we're tracking below where we, well, no, we're tracking above where we were last year. And we are about, with our reduced, reduced budget for FY 2021, as you recall, when we went through our COVID budget pivot, we reduced the estimated receipts. So we're tracking it about eighty percent, but much of that is due to the nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars that we receive from the short-term rentals. So if you back that out, we're tracking about where we were last year. And looking at all the categories, some are behind, such as motor vehicles. And looking at all the categories, some are behind, such as motor vehicle excise to where we were last year. The permit charges for beaches and sewer, and the transfer station, they're above where we were last year because, as you recall, the board delayed the expiration of those. So people had an extra month to apply for those. So we have a bump in those for this year. So that's it on the revenue side. I'll answer any questions now, or if you want to wait until I talk about the COVID-related expenditures, which have been quite high.
Any questions for Alex so far? No, okay. Why don't you proceed, Alex?
Okay, thank you. As far as COVID-related expenditures, we've created a special revenue fund to track all of our coded COVID-related expenditures. So it makes it easier for us to report, both for FEMA reimbursement and the CARES Act reimbursements. We have expended a total of $763,019.09 so far for FY 20 and 21. We've received revenues under the CARES Act for 200, let's see, we've received $297,488. So that leaves us a deficit right now of $661,217.17. However, FEMA is reviewing our application for funding. They will fund 75% of eligible costs, and we will look to apply for the remaining money under the CARES Act, which is the balance remaining is $245,625. And the CARES Act will fund that 25% match. So going through all the, you know, expenses that we've applied for, what's eligible, what's not eligible, we'll continue to apply for CARES Act funding for items that won't qualify under FEMA. And then if there's anything remaining, we'll either have to charge back to the departmental budgets and or look for transfer funds at town meeting to fund that deficit. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Alex? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Alex, just, just one of those FEMA and CARES Act numbers by me again, please. You said we've, we've spent $763,001. That's, those are monies out, and then you said we've been reimbursed from the CARES grant, $297, about 300K?
Uh, yeah.
So that leaves about 400K yet to be reimbursed by somebody potentially. Is that, is that correct?
Right. $415,592.
$415,000. Do you think you're going to get that from FEMA?
I don't think so. I don't think we'll receive all of that because the, as of September 15th, they tightened up the eligibility, what was eligible for reimbursement from them. So we'll look to apply for some of that from CARES, from the remaining $245,000 under the CARES Act, but I don't think we'll get it all. I've notified the department heads, so anything that we don't think is eligible is now being charged to departmental budgets. And we'll look to either fund that, we do have the Finance Committee Reserve Fund for $100,000 that could fund some of this. Obviously, this was extraordinary, we didn't budget for it. So, yeah, we'll continue, you know, we're fighting as hard as we can to get that FEMA reimbursement.
Yeah, we want to, obviously, we want to fight as hard as we can, you know, to get the federal funds if we can. And who knows, there may, I haven't read the detail of the 908 billion that's at least potentially forthcoming here in the next couple of weeks, we'll see, or a month or so. There may be some monies that'll titrate down to states and municipalities, we'll see. Anyway, anyways, it's good, we're going to get at least 300K out of the CARES grant, $297,000, that's good. Better than nothing.
We actually, the total grant from the CARES funding was for $543,113. We've already seen, received some of that money.
Oh, it's for 500K from the CARES grant?
Yes, yeah. So we had, we've had two rounds so far. On the first round, we received $100,043. Round two, which we submitted in November, we received $197,445, leaving us a balance remaining of 245, 625, which I think, I'm waiting for the guidance to come out on that when we have to apply for that.
Okay, good. Thank you, Alex. That's very helpful. Thank you. Good luck. Yeah. Thanks.
I'll say, Jeff?
Yeah, I am, thank you.
All right. Dean, your hand is raised.
I just want, Shereen, I just wanted to tell you, I'm, I'm on the phone. I, I have the video muted to watch, even my phone connection is not great, but, and I'll see how this goes for the rest of the meeting. But Alex, I wanted to ask you about the CARES Act reimbursements. Does, do the numbers you've shown, it was about 500,000, does that include the 25,000 that the Airport Commission was getting for the environmental assessment that they recently applied for and received? I'm curious.
No, it does not. This was strictly the CARES Act funding for the town. So it does not include that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you shift your hands up again?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you, I'm good.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the remote participants? Anybody on the phone that wants to speak? Okay, I see that we have one, LA. You have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Alex, I was just wondering, $763,000, could you just give us a sense of what kinds of things were included in that? That's a lot of money. What some of the line items were that caused it to be that high? What's covered under that?
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, to report on this, some of the items that we charged, and we did categorize this by different areas, temporary wages, which was to fill in for people whether they were quarantining or whether we needed additional staff due to social distancing. So that was almost $59,000. Overtime expenses, $8,889. Unemployment insurance, there was an amount for unemployment claims, some of those will have to be charged back to the general fund at some, once we go through that. Contracted cleaning was the big amount, $115,000 to clean all the buildings. Physical exams, again, the exams and testing, $9,111. Small amount for Labor Council for some of the guidelines, $300. Office supplies, this has to do with some of the PPE especially, almost $22,000. Some of the modifications to the buildings, $53,000. The porta-potties and restroom cleaning during the summer, the daily cleaning and sometimes twice daily cleaning was $57,000. And then some of the public outreach was about $6,000. We also did have remote learning and remote participation, so technology items, about $21,000.
Okay, that just seems, that seems to be like maybe 300,000. $763 just seemed really, really high to me.
Oh, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry. That was for this year, I didn't print out the detail for last year. Yeah, so that was this fiscal year. I could print out the detail from the last fiscal year because we spent almost $270,000 in the last fiscal year.
For two fiscal years, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from remote participants? I don't hear any. Thank you, Alex, for the update. Okay. All right, so we finished the update on the coronavirus, and, and now we're going to move on to the Route 28 West Chatham project update from the DPW Director, Temple. Welcome, Tom, are you on?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Selectmen. With respect to West Chatham Road Construction Project, the state and the contractor continue to install the granite curving. They've completed the T-100 truck transition pieces, also made out of granite. This is the inner area that's part of the truck turning movements, that, so that's temporarily with hot mixed asphalt. They've done the intermediate course for the sidewalk from George Rider Road, just shy of Bon Hill Road, and now they've jumped to the other side, to the south side of the road, they'll be completing the paving on that side. Right now, they're also in getting ready to lower all the structures, all the catch basins to binder grade for the winter months. As you know, the last few days, we've had a significant amount of rain and some torrential downpours that we had, similar to Cross Street. You have the water and the catch basins that are raised up an inch and a half, ready for the top course of pavement. So it's not collecting all the water when we have these bigger storms. So the state is going to lower those at our request to binder level for the wintertime. And they're trying to continue working, like I had mentioned in my report, till January and see, see how the weather is progressing. If we have a mild winter, they would like to continue working and get as much done as they can. But of course, that's all in, you know, in compliance with their state standard specifications and their regulations as far as materials and what they can and can't do given certain temperatures. So we'll keep our close eye on, on what they're looking to do scheduling-wise, and we'll do it according to, to the requirements that they have in their state standard book. I do know we're looking to try to get the foundations in place for the street lighting as well as trying to get the two insertion valves. There's a small portion that affects four light poles locations. Because of the infrastructure that we had when we did test holes out there, they would, might be in areas right adjacent to the, one of the force mains and our water main. We had done insertion valves earlier in the project when we relocated the hydrants, that was to, in an effort not to have temporary bypass and having to relay on both sides of the road with temporary bypass water mains. This allows us to do two insertion valves and not put anybody out of water and keep all the businesses and all the, all the residents with water service while we do that relocation, approximately 75 feet, 80 feet tops. It's a, you know, a big expense on the state's part, but because of the conflicts, we weren't willing to let them move the AC, force mains, et cetera, for the, for the service. They're going to get, update their completion schedule as we look forward with the temperatures and the weathers that we see moving into January. We'll see the availability of their subcontractors, and hopefully, we can get even more work done through the winter months if we have a mild winter. That's all I have for the West Chatham construction. They have addressed the, the four or five entrances that were a problem. Those were completed the following day after we talked the last time. So those have been addressed, and I don't believe there's any real outstanding issues that have come up in the last few, you know, few days, but things have been moving, moving right along with that project and, you know, trying to expedite everything.
Shereen, you're muted.
Trying to follow my own rules. Peter, you have a question? And then Cory? You're muted, Peter.
What is it? It's catchy. And I, I just wanted to mention to Tom, last Friday, I went down to pick up my package at around 4 o'clock, 4:30, just coming, heading back along Main Street, coming up to the, the roundabout on Main Street. And out of the, out of, obviously, the Ford dealership was one of those tractor trailers that carries cars, but it wasn't full. That guy made an almost a 360 turn at our, at our rotary, and that thing is, it's, I didn't count the wheels, but it looked as big as, as long as an 18-wheeler. But in any case, he made the 360 at our rotary, and I said, I got to follow him and see where he's going to go. So he went down to West Chatham, it was before the, the rotary was being worked at by Dunkin' Donuts, and he continued on, and he didn't even, he didn't even try to go around the rotary. All he did was the, the next roundabout, he just kind of went up and over and, and continued on. So I was, you know, I've seen those guys maneuver stuff, but I was, I was impressed. He was a good driver, but yeah, he didn't have any problems with the rotary at one end, and just make that comment, that's all.
Thank you, Peter. Cory, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, so Tom, just to clarify, the, the curb cut for the West Chatham Post Office Plaza was adjusted and is it, is there no consideration to make any more amendments to that opening?
They, they opened it up, I, I'm, I'm not sure what your question is. Are you saying that you're still receiving calls after they fixed it?
Well, I, I go there on a regular basis, and I guess, I guess in my opinion, and I'll let other people speak out too, I, I still think that curb or that opening is a little bit deficient, and the angles, especially when you're going, heading toward, you know, town and taking a right into the plaza, I am concerned about the curving. And now that they put that big orange barrel in, in the middle of the driveway, the opening, it's, I, 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 my opinion, I, I think there's going to be conflict, and I don't, I, I think it could use some more field adjustments to make it a little bit wider and vehicle-friendly. But that's, and, and I go there on, on a daily basis. So I, I, I don't think, in my opinion, the current conditions are ideal.
Yeah, I, I know the state, you know, they, they normally like to have their openings at 32 feet at the curb-to-curb, at the, at the roadway edge of pavement. In that particular location, they only wanted to open that to 50, and I believe that we had them open it to 55. I'll, I'll try to meet with the state on Thursday and walk it with their, with their super and take a look at what you're talking about, and if, if there's any way that we can adjust it, we'll try to adjust it. I'll, I'll take a look at all the ones they just did before they get too far with the, they only put the intermediate sidewalk pavement down out there, so if there's any, any modifications or tweaking that needs to be done, now's the time to do it. So I have no problem with trying to set up a meeting with them on Thursday just to take a look at everything one more time out in the field and take, I'll take a larger vehicle out with me and make sure that, you know, they're seeing what, what we're talking about, so.
All right, fair enough. If there's any...
Cory, I believe Cory froze. Tom, I'm just going to throw it out to the public to see if anybody has questions on the West Chatham project? Any of the remote participants? Mr. Norris, your hand is raised or was raised?
It is raised, or it's trying to...
Go ahead, Mr. Norris.
Hi, everybody. I, I have a question as to the work schedule before, oh, there's Josh, before Christmas and before New Year's. Is there, because, you know, it was a little rough what happened before Thanksgiving, and I'm wondering if we're going to be looking at the same sort of work scenario or if the day before the holiday will be off?
Yeah, the, the state normally does not like to work the day before and the day after the holiday. So in this particular case, I believe Christmas is on a Friday, so Thursday, we'll try not to have them work on Thursday, Friday, and, you know, and I'm sure that the amount of work that they have, the last time that we had a holiday, we were trying to complete the binder course and pavement and, and establish the footprint for the roadway to get everything binded in because it was all gravel. So we were under the gun to try to get that before we had a, a storm event coming. So, you know, we had like three or four anticipated days of rain, so, you know, they were able to get that done on Friday and part of the day Saturday instead of taking up all of Saturday. So we'll make sure that they're, you know, they're trying to get, you know, out of there before the holidays and not interrupt that weekend in leading up to it. So, and then right now, there, most of their work is relegated to the sides of the road right now and curving and the setting of, of the side. So, you know, we'll make sure that, you know, these entrances that people have for businesses are kept open, at least having the one, if not getting the two, so that they're open at, at the end of the day so they can pour, pour the concrete and set the cement in place for the granite curving.
Okay, thank you.
Elaine, I see your hand is up. Go ahead.
Thank you. I had two questions and just one comment. Was George Rider Road South expanded? I know a lot of people who live down there had concerns that it was way too narrow for two vehicles, and I wondered if that was fixed.
The openings have been widened, and I believe they were transitioning them down instead of doing the, the curving in that they had originally done where they bottlenecked it. So I believe that, you know, the last time I drove past there, it had been transitioned down instead of running into it. So the overall roadway, I don't think the roadway has been widened yet. I, I think when they put the pavement down, it's my understanding that the, they put the berm, the Cape Cod berm down and took a portion of that roadway. They're aware that they have to widen that and get rid of that and make sure that the roadway is widened to what it was before. So that hasn't been done yet. I know that hasn't been done. They're more or less trying to get the footprint and the curving in, in place before the onset of winter. They'll jump back to that, but that is going to be addressed.
Okay, because I think what the people were concerned about was where the curbing was. They thought the curbing was, you know, which is permanent, was, made it...
They thought the curving was, you know, which is permanent, made it really small, an entrance for two vehicles because they have large trucks that are going back and forth, so I just hope that was cared for. Secondly, this is just an observation because I, you know, I had said a couple weeks ago that the roundabout looked smaller at Barn Hill, and I looked at the full set of plans, and if they're following those, when you're heading eastbound and you go through George Rider, the roundabout road is twenty-two feet from the roundabout itself to the curving. It's twenty-two. And when you go into Barn Hill, it's only eighteen. It's actually four and a half feet less wide. It's really, it's really gonna be narrow. Now, even at, and at George Rider, you have that breakdown area that's gonna have the stamped concrete so that if there were an issue going into that, they can use that. But there is no stamped concrete on the right as you proceed east. It's going to be granite curbing, and it's only eighteen and a half feet wide, and I think that's way too narrow. But I would just like them to look at that before, they haven't laid the curving yet. I checked today. And before they do that, I think they should consider widening that. And they haven't put in, I was kinda hoping they wouldn't put them in, but I assume they are. Are they putting in the islands still? Because there's no indication they're gonna be there on Main Street at George Rider and on George Rider itself.
They are putting in the islands, the, in the roundabouts, they've already established the one at George Rider. The other islands, they're gonna be putting in. I'm not sure if they're going to do it before the onset of winter. I think they're trying to get all the curving and get all the drainage so that the water and the runoff is going to the basins and all the curbing's in place for winter. That's their main focus. If they can get the other little islands in, in between of the work, that's, that's great. Otherwise, it's more or less trying to get the footprint of the roadway and all the drainage and everything functioning for the wintertime is their key goal.
Okay, I would just hope that you would look at that Barn Hill roundabout before final work is done on the curbing, considering that they will be putting in the islands separating the two lanes. That is gonna be really, really tight when you're going east.
Yeah, I did, I did look at that when they were doing, I did look at that when they were doing the, when I was reviewing the hundred percent design plans, and I made sure that the templates that they were using for that were a WB sixty, which is the biggest truck that we have in town, including our ladder truck. So it does work on geometrically, on paper, as well as we'll have our, we'll have our fire trucks go out as soon as they get that roughed in and make certain that it is working before we do any final paving of any sort out there.
I do know that it's gonna be okay for the trucks because they can run over the, but the intent is not to have cars run over it. The problem is, the roadway is really narrow. It's like a go-kart with granite obstacles. When you approach that Barn Hill and you try and go around the roundabout, it's only eighteen feet versus the other ones, which are tight right now. The other ones are twenty-two feet and they're tight, and that's gonna be eighteen feet. That's four and a half feet less. So I'm just, once those curbs get in, I would like you to check that to make sure it's not gonna be.
I believe George Rider is only nineteen feet wide from curb to curb, transition piece, and I think it's the same for the one at Barn Hill, but I'll take a look at the plans and...
Yeah, look at the, the plans show twenty-two. The plans do show twenty-two feet at George Rider when you enter the roundabout, and they show eighteen point one one when you enter the roundabout at Barn Hill. And the one that we're dealing with now, because the islands are in, it's pretty tight, and it's gonna be even tighter at Barn Hill for cars. I think cars should stay in lanes. I don't think they should be running over the islands, otherwise there's no reason to have roundabouts. Okay, that's all I have.
Shereen, you're muted.
I'm muted again. Okay, sorry. I'm gonna keep myself unmuted. Tom, can we get an update on the Main Street and Cross Street together, a little update?
Sure. Cross Street, right now, we had to cancel the paving this morning. We're anticipating paving and following up with the remaining driveway aprons out there, but because of the anticipated bad weather, we pushed the paving off till tomorrow. So right now, we have it scheduled to start in the morning. I had, I've asked them to increase it to eight trucks per round, right? Originally, they had it for five. That should speed things up. Eight trucks in a round, we should get two and a half rounds to complete that roadway. I also talked with Lynch and asked them whether they're doing the work for Neco, if they could also pull Kent Lane out at the same time and get that all paved for their trench areas that the gas company had done, so they're doing that as well at the same time. So those two streets will be buttoned up the following day. They'll be finishing up, weather permitting, they'll be finishing up the aprons going down the street for those to make sure that they are in compliance with ADA as well as meeting the new roadway edge of pavement. And that should finish up Cross Street, and then they'll just have the miscellaneous cleanup. And I don't think that we'll get the loming and seeding done this year. We'll hold off till springtime next year, catch the planting season, and then finish off, finish off everything, but we should be in good shape. Hopefully, we can, with the weather, hopefully we can get a couple nice days. I can get line painting company out to get the center lines and the fog lines and crosswalks in hopefully this year before the onset of winter. With respect to Main Street, Main Street sidewalks are completed with the exception of the driveway aprons. They're doing the driveway aprons, starting those probably on Thursday, same as Cross Street. The last two areas that we're working on is the captain, captain's table. They started doing the brick relay over there. The ramp that was originally there, leading into the crosswalk, it originally sloped all the way from their brick walkway right straight down to the roadway, which was in noncompliance with ADA and AAV requirements. What we've done is we set that crosswalk in line with a proposed crosswalk that's going to be for the library work if that ever takes place. So that's all set. The brick work that is being done that started today, they now have that slope coming. Their original slope for their going to the restaurant door was in noncompliance. It was eight point two percent. It was supposed to be under seven point five. With this adjustment to bring our sidewalk into compliance along with the handicap ramp at the bottom, we're able to bring their ramp into compliance as well as bring our ADA compliance for that crosswalk for Library Lane. They have the remaining milling of Library Lane, both Seaview entrances. The work for the Puritan Way area has been finalized today for binder, everything meets, and the truck for the commercial haul of the pickup there are no longer bottoming out. We met with the homeowner, the owner of the businesses there, and told them what we were doing. We reestablished a bullet that was there that was rotted out. We have all that spread away, so we can now top that, we can top the other streets. And it was one resident up by closest to the leather company, which one of the driveways was steep. He contacted the contractor, him and I met out there with the owner, and we transitioned that back probably another forty or fifty feet to make it, so it was a more even exchange to that sidewalk because of the handicap ramp. So we should be all set with that. Looking at the new handicap location that we put in front opposite Puritan Way, there's one step left there. After meeting with the owner on, I think it was last Friday or Monday, he indicated he wanted bricks instead of the concrete step. After doing some research, we were unable to find the half bricks like we're able to for the, for our water and sewer structures. So we're looking at if he wants that redone, we will take that concrete slab out and redo that with bricks to make it match what's existing there, and then redo the handrails. So we should be buttoning everything up on Main Street, you know, the week of the fourteenth and fifteenth likely anticipated. We're in pretty good shape, you know? We have just the real driveways to match up, the three streets to mill and blend back, and then we're done with that project as well.
Thank you. Any, I see Dean has his hand up. Dean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, did you say with respect to Cross Street that the final top coat would be done, weather permitting, this season, not wait till spring? Is that what I heard you say?
Cross Street is gonna be done tomorrow, so it should be completed by the end of the day.
That's the final coat?
Yes, the top loss in, you know, weather permitting, if we don't have any rain coming in the, in, you know, in the morning, et cetera, then it's a go.
Okay. You say in your memo that's included with the meeting pack with respect to the Main Street, that with the new crosswalk comes a decision point as to what color for all-town crosswalks. So who makes that decision?
I was gonna go ahead and I was trying to get, I was trying to find the detail of the coloring, because I know I saw it, whether it was in the, in the ADA compliance course that we had to take several years ago. I couldn't remember where I saw it, but they had a breakdown of color chart, which I wanted to put into the package for the board of selectmen. I was unable to find it. I reached out to a couple of the engineering companies to see if they could, you know, find it. They were unable to find it. The MUTCD standard mentions it, but they mentioned it as, they mentioned it as earth-toned colors, and then they went more specifically into rust. They had rust, yellow, blue, gray, and brick color. And I would prefer to find the actual cut sheet of the acceptable color so that, you know, the board can look at it and determine what they want, what they want for that color. I think the reason they swayed away from the green was because when they started to go with the bike lanes and the bike travel, their color was green, and it's a light green. So people that have a hard time seeing green, it might be hard for them to determine whether that's a bike or a crosswalk. So, you know, I, as soon as I find it, what I'll do is I'll forward it to everybody via email, and that way there, you'll have it, at least, you know, it can be put back on the agenda item if that's what you'd like to do. But I apologize, I couldn't find, I couldn't put my fingers on it for some reason. I checked the MASTOT site, I checked the MUT standard site. I couldn't find it anywhere, but I know it exists, so I will find it and get it to you.
It would be, thank you. It would, for the board of selectmen decision, it sounds like, will be up to the board once we have the possibilities in front of us.
Yeah. Okay, Cory?
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, can you just talk a little bit more about the relocation of the crosswalk and why the, I guess, the location of, I'll say, you know, from front of Sarah Campbell Building across was chosen versus any other site?
Yeah, the problem we were having is with the compliance of that handicap because you'd have to have the crossing for Library Lane, and then you'd have to extend it further down adjacent to the existing one that was already gonna be there for Library Lane. By moving it down, you're going to eat up. If you take a look at the ones that are out there, you'll see the transitions that go in. You have to, you have to accommodate seven, you can't exceed seven and a half percent slope coming in and out of the landing for the handicap ramp, and you can't have a cross slope greater than one and a half percent. That poses a problem with the slope that we had from that intersection further. We would have eaten up so much of that sidewalk out in front of that in trying to, you know, get the grades that we needed to meet those requirements, it would have been tough. And when, when they, when the owner came out and talked to both the contractor and I, well, we thought he was the owner of the building, but he was actually the captain's table, he had suggested moving it to the location it is right now. After, after finding out he wasn't the owner, we met with the owner, he talked to us about the different problems he had with what's out there. We went over everything, made sure we had everything in writing what he wanted to address it, but that's, that's the reason, because of the amount of space and the height differential from that property, to get it into compliance, there's no way we could have met ADA compliance if we left it at that location, given the crossing for Library Lane and then the crossing to go across Main Street at that same place. So, you know, when he suggested move, when he suggested moving it down seventy-five feet, that was fine with us. He wanted it in the middle there, which lined up opposite, you know, the other side, which wasn't gonna affect any other grades or doorways on the other side, so that's the reason we chose that location.
Okay. I just know, I received a couple inquiries about it, and there's a couple of concerns that I will let, you know, citizens speak on their own behalf, just, but for the record, there are, there are some who are concerned about the new location, so, thank you.
The other possibility, if that, excuse me, if that, I didn't mean to interrupt. The other, the other possibility, because of the distance between the Main Street crossing at the Town Hall Building and the next one over at Seaview, the other option is to eliminate it totally, if that was the wish of the board of selectmen, to eliminate any of that grade differential, given that short distance between those crosswalks. And right now, most people know that people cross the street where they cross the street when they get out of it. So, you know, it's another thought that the board might wanna consider, but we tried our best to accommodate everybody that was, was involved and what their, what their needs were, and but yet still trying to meet the requirements of both the Architectural Access Board and American Disability Act.
Just, just for whatever it's worth, I mean, I've owned a shop on corner Main and Seaview Street for twenty years, and people cross, cross Main Street at will, no crosswalk, year after year after year after year. So that's just the reality of it, and people just, they choose, they choose to cross where they feel like it.
Amen.
All right, thanks, Cory. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we have a question from Janice Rogers. Welcome, Janice.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of concerns, one which was related to the driveway at five seventy-nine Main between Puritan and five seventy-nine Main. I know that there've been many attempts to made, made to grade it more gradually. I know they came back today and then did it again. My question related to that is just, are they planning to do anything about the cobblestones that are now unsupported and sitting loosely on top of dirt? Are there any plans to reinforce that, or are they just gonna wash away the next time it rains?
Janice, yes, they, as we talked about the day out in the field, I'm not sure if you were there when we were talking about it, but we talked about resetting those cobblestones after we reset the grade and paved that area. He's gonna dig up along that, I think it's the, was it the west side of your drive, of that driveway entrance, and those will be reset accordingly by Lynch Corporation.
All right, great. And then my other concern is related to the crosswalk relocation. I am concerned about the safety of pedestrians because that driveway is a blind driveway. People walk back and forth across it, runners, people push their stroller first, for some reason, across that driveway, and there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. So to pull out of the driveway and then make a sharp left onto Main Street and have a crosswalk right there is a concern. And also coming from the west, as you approach, you know, let's say, the people that pull into that driveway stop for the crosswalk, pedestrians, pedestrians leave, you then try to pull into the driveway. It creates two, two situations that I'm concerned about. One is, then what if there are pedestrians crossing, you know, in front of the driveway? And the second is getting hit from behind because cars coming down Main Street may not recognize the fact that, you know, people are turning into that driveway and don't have their blinker on to turn on Cross Street.
Well, what we can do is we could look at the signage that would be, we could put up in advance warning on each direction just to let people know that the crosswalk is there as well as the signage that they put up during the summertime for pedestrians, for people to stop. But I think it'll be pretty visible once everything's in place and once it's all striped and traffic markings are in place. The curse of that driveway being eliminating that hump that was there, I think it also gives a better sight distance for the drivers coming down now and the ability to see when they get to the bottom of that driveway. So we'll keep an eye on it and, you know, take a look and see what needs to be done if there's anything on the town spot.
How many parking spaces do you anticipate eliminating on either side of the drive, the crosswalk on both sides of the How many parking spaces do you anticipate eliminating on either side of the crosswalk on both sides of the street?
I think on that side, because of the parking, the, on the Eastley side, I don't think we're losing any because of the driveway width, and so that side's untouched. The side to the west, I believe, that's the area where you had a small distance, where, you know, we have it all hatched off right now because it's a choke point. And I believe that that right there with the no parking triangles that we have there, there was only one spot there originally, but I think we lose it, we might lose that on that side. It could stay as a hatched-in area or drop-off area, but we wouldn't use it as a parking spot because of the closeness between the two streets. So I think that we'd lose that, but we picked one up on the other side, or possibly two on the other side, because of the moving of that and the new location of the handicap ramp at Library Lane. So I think we'll, I think we'll gain one spot at the end of the day, more than we have currently.
To clarify, there will be, you know, the little triangle things or whatever, the spaces on either side of the crosswalk so that people can't park close to that crosswalk to give you visibility?
That's correct. They're existing right now, and if that place stays where there was one spot that we've hatched out for a drop-off area that are no parking, we put a sign saying no parking temporarily for COVID. I think that that should remain that way, you know, whether it's considered by the Board of Selectmen as a drop-off area or making it that one spot, the hatch line should stay on each side of that for safety reasons. But it might be a good place for delivery trucks to be able to pull over and continue doing that, moving forward even after COVID. I think it's a great idea for that location.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Elaine, your hand, is it still up, or do you have a question?
Did I get answered?
No.
I'm not hearing from Elaine. Okay. We're going to move on to the rest of your present, your report, and then, okay?
With respect to the water mains, the testing company was not able to do it on the timeframe that I mentioned on the, in my agenda. That was performed, the first sampling was done on Monday. We should have the rest of the sampling in two days. We'll have the second sampling. And if all goes well, we should have all results back by Friday. It will stop the lateral connections for each of those streets and wrap that up for the winter months. So, you know, we had to wait for the testing company to get back and be able to test the fluorination and the bacteria testing that was needed for those means and pressure testing. So, other than that, I think the only other thing that I can recall is the Bridge Street, which I've got to do the review on the plans that they just submitted. And I should have that hopefully by Thursday of this week back to them and hopefully out to bid.
Any questions on the last portion of the report from the Board? No? Okay, any questions from the remote participants? And I don't see any. Thank you, Tom.
Have a great night. We'll see you later.
Good night.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, so this is the public comment period time, and this is where the remote participants have an opportunity to comment on our business agenda, which includes renewals of annual liquor licenses, requests for change of Sunday hours for Blue Finns and Sushi and Sake Bar, consider requests for Chatham Community Housing Partnership increase membership, budget policy decisions for fiscal year 2022, a review of Chatham 365 priorities, and consider prohibition of sales of nip bottles. So if anybody would like to make any comments in relationship to any of those agenda items, this is the time to do so. We give, speaker, we limit the speaking time to five minutes total for any one speaker. So if anybody wants to comment, please raise your hand now, and we'll start the process. I see Brett Tully has raised his hand. Welcome, Brett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Y'all got me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I wanted to just make a couple of comments on the agenda item for reviewing the Chatham 365 priorities. Offer just a little bit of context and a couple specific recommendations for the Board to consider as you talk about the budget. So just briefly, I think, you know, at the heart of the 365 effort was to call attention to this problem of the growing gap between housing costs and wages. That's what we heard from Chatham folks, is that the issue around jobs and housing were the top priorities. And since March and the pandemic, it's been pretty clear that on both fronts, those problems have been exacerbated. We've heard of the housing boom and the average price of housing just going so far up. Meanwhile, we're hearing the need for housing assistance by Chatham residents also going up to the tune of, I think it was about 400% increase in housing assistance was provided this year by the Housing Assistance Corporation and a couple others. When it comes to jobs and wages, I think it's been pretty clear that Chatham businesses are struggling. There was a Chatham Coronavirus Impact Survey, or Chatham Coronavirus Impact Fund Survey that's been ongoing, and they just completed a November survey. And it showed pretty clearly that Chatham businesses are struggling much more than they were even back in October, September. Another issue that's been exacerbated has been childcare. Childcare was also identified as a pretty big problem for especially young families like myself. Just as a personal example, I have two kids, a three-year-old and a three-month-year-old. And my wife and I have just been looking at 2021 and our budget and the cost of childcare just to pay our mortgage. Both of us have to work, we work really hard, and the cost for us next year will be just over $30,000. And that's not even full-time childcare. And that's, you know, finding the best, it's not the most expensive childcare that's out there, it's pretty average. So it's going to cost us $30,000. In the past, like last year, we were able to apply for some relief, for some scholarship money, but I think for a lot of childcare providers, because they've been also hit hard by COVID, that they're revoking a lot of their scholarship money. So for families like us, $30,000 is a pretty big chunk. It's about, you know, over a third of our income. It's our biggest expense. So just one example, to offer some specifics for the Board to consider in this conversation, more affordable, attainable housing is such a big one. I think a specific goal for the Board to consider achieving in the next year would be to develop minimally 20 new units that combines rental and ownership and both affordable and attainable housing for the goal of supporting more young families in Chatham. I think saving the elementary school is a big one. I think the Board should do whatever it can to provide whatever money is needed to save the elementary school. On that note, just quickly, hopefully I'm not approaching my five minutes. I heard earlier in today's call, there's a survey going out. And I think I would be one of the families that would be included in that. I've not heard of that survey yet. It sounded like the survey was going out like today, and the deadline was December 15th. It's, if that's correct, it seems like it's a really important survey that will determine the future of the elementary school. And I have not got that survey yet. The deadline's like a week from today. That just seems totally unreasonable. I think, even a short amount of time, regardless when, is unreasonable, but especially the month of December, when everyone is so busy. So just wanted to flag that on the side. And then the last kind of recommendation that relates back to the 365 priorities was around the town website. I think a pretty low-hanging fruit kind of goal is to improve the town website, put some money towards it with a focus around encouraging participation. One very specific example could be kind of highlighting like the ADU opportunities and incentives for folks to develop accessory dwelling units and have some kind of coordination to really encourage folks to use that more. It's just one example. And just on a positive note, I think one exciting opportunity is, I think we're seeing there seems to be more people like moving to Chatham, living in Chatham. Back in July, I think there was a count of 500 more registered Chatham voters than in past years. A lot of factors involved in that, but just word on the street, it seems like more people are here. Certainly, there are some younger folks and new families that are moving here, so it's a big opportunity. You know, the town of Eastham, I think back in October, passed a $500,000 package aimed at supporting families and year-round residents, so it seems like an opportunity for Chatham to be equally as bold going into 2021. So thank you for the time. Appreciate it. And thanks for making this a priority. I wanted to start by saying that. Thanks to the Board for doing this. Thanks.
Thank you, Brett. Okay. Are there any other remote participants that would like to speak to any of the agenda items that are, that we're discussing tonight? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on then to our next agenda item, Agenda Item, which is a Consent Calendar, Consent Agenda. These are items that are routine, non-controversial, and administrative in matters, matters that are required the Board's action. Any Board member can request an item to be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration and discussion. Removing an item from the Agenda does not require a vote. So Jeff, your hand is raised, and you're muted.
Yep. Thanks, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the Consent Agenda.
Okay. All right, great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All right, we'll take a roll call vote then. And I just want to note that it is a reappointment of Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council. We're reappointing Ally Sabatino, our principal planner. Okay, we'll take a roll. Peter? Need to unmute, please?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Jeff? Dean?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay, so that has passed unanimously. Thank you, Ally. All right, and then we're going to move into our business agenda. Our first order of business is consider renewals of annual liquor licenses. And I think Shauna, do you want to give us a little recap of that?
Sure. I'm actually very happy to report that all of our current licensees returned all of the required applications, the fees, they're current on their inspections, and tax bills and water bills, so I recommend that all be renewed.
Okay. We have a sum total of how many renewals here? Do we know?
There are a total of 28.
28 renewals. Do we have any discussion from the Board on this, or any questions for Alex?
No.
I mean, for Shauna, sorry. Dean?
Yeah, Madam Chair, within the past year, because of the COVID pandemic, we granted some leniency in terms of the actual fee amounts. Is that being, it's not being proposed at the present time, has there been any interest, Shauna, that you've heard coming forward from the licensee community? I understand that in the town of Harwich, they've had this conversation.
The feedback I did receive from licensees after the Board approved a reduction of the fees for renewals this year, they were very appreciative of that action.
Okay, so does that apply to these renewals?
Yes.
What we took, okay, all right, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or a motion for approval?
Move to approve as presented by the Licensing Agent.
Thank you, Dean. Second?
Second.
Okay, Corey seconded. Okay, let's take a vote to approve. Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, we have approved the renewal of the annual liquor licenses. All right. The next order of business is consider requests for change of Sunday hours. And this is for Blue Finns Sushi and Sake Bar, and I believe it's Andy Baylor. Is Andy on the call? I don't hear him. Shauna, do you have any additional information you can share?
Sure, I don't, I don't see Andy on.
Yeah, I don't either.
But he indicated that he was interested in pursuing this to retain the possibility of offering a brunch on Sundays at some point in the future. I will note that probably 75% of our restaurants have extended their Sunday hours to 10 or 11.
Okay. All right. And so basically, he's just asking for a 10:00 AM opening for Sundays? And this is in request because of his alcohol license hours of operation? So do we have any comments? Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the request to extend Sunday opening hours to 10:00 AM from noon to Blue Finns Sushi and Sake Bar, Inc., R13 Main Street, Chatham, Mass.
Who's second?
Second. Peter?
Hey, Peter, thanks. We'll take a vote then. Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Okay, it's been approved. All right. Our next agenda item is consider requests for Chatham Community Housing Partnership to increase their membership. And I believe that we have the Chair, Carolyn McClellan, who is going to make a, who's going to have a presentation for us. Carolyn, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we were just thinking, our committee in general, thinking about how lucky we are, unfortunate we are to be at this point right now, where Chatham's finally ready to pull the trigger and really possibly develop a significant number of housing units, and trying to look at a comprehensive plan over the next couple of years and the type of housing we want. We've hired a consultant, and, you know, I've been working on housing for a while. Other people are working on it a lot longer than me, but we waited a long time for this. And so thinking about that, I really think it would be negligent of us not to try to surround ourselves with the most knowledgeable people in the community who could offer us expertise in affordable housing and government. I think we're a little shallow in our committee on some of these things, and we could use that. And, I mean, these are volunteers, they're not being, we're not paying them, and they are willing to come on board. And I would just really, I really feel like it would be a missed opportunity if we couldn't take advantage of that.
Okay, Carolyn, thank you. Carolyn, so have you had expressed interest from community members wanting to serve on the Community Housing Partnership?
Yeah, I've spoken to a number of folks informally, and they are very interested. And they're excited about where the town is right now, and they're excited about trying to move it forward. And they have experience in town government, experience in affordable housing, permitting, planning. So, I mean, I don't want to just increase our membership to have a bunch more people there. I don't even, I'm not even really interested in just having somebody who wants to make a difference and might be a smart individual. I want people with a specific skill set to come and join our committee to help us, you know, make the smartest decisions we can and help the town to end up with the best solution possible for housing. That's my goal.
Okay, I know that we have one very qualified applicant waiting in the queue already that's expressed interest on both the Community Housing Partnership and if we do end up expanding the housing trustees to a different membership. That person has put their application for both of those committees. I just want to say that. But Peter, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Carolyn. Yeah, I'll say upfront, normally I like to listen before I do, but I believe this is the right move. I think that we're also, that we've had a, let's call it a volunteer committee that has been very much interested, but it's now, we're now at a different has been very much interested, but it's now, we're now at a different stage where I, where this committee would, needs to be very much involved with where we move ahead and having the right people that understand what affordable housing is, not just wanting to do it, but, but what's available, what can be done in the town. Also, we have a consultant, but I think putting a few more smart people that know how to build affordable housing or where we can go for it is a smart move. We gave a charge a number of years ago, not even this board on this committee, and it's been expanded somewhat. And I just, I just think that it's time. And, and I believe in the timeframe that Carolyn mentioned, over the next year, two years, we have to get something done. And I think that's the most important thing we can do. And then I'll just throw this out because I thought our good friend, Mr. Tully, made some very good points about how, what kinds of jobs we should have. He didn't say it this way, but we have to increase year-round jobs. And the first step you have to make to do that is to have affordable and attainable housing. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Jeff?
Yeah, I echo Selectman Kokolos' sentiments 100%. And I appreciate Carolyn bringing this, this motion forward, the suggested motion forward, especially if we have talented folks waiting in the wings to join this, to join the community housing partnership. So with that being said, I move to increase the membership of the Chatham Community Housing Partnership from the current seven to nine.
Do we have a second?
Second, Peter.
Second, I think Cory was first to second that, but that's okay. Cory, and your hand is up, so why don't you comment?
This is a simple comment, it's just that, you know, we have a situation where we get nine of our citizens to step forward and serve for the benefit of the community. I am all on board. I applaud anyone stepping forward and willing to put the time in. So I'm good on this one.
Okay. Any, any other comments from? Dean, any comment?
No, I'm supportive of it. I welcome the addition.
Well, then, well, then let's take a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Okay, we have just moved, we're looking for, oh, and Dean, I'm sorry, Dean. Dean says aye.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you, Carolyn. Thank you.
We will do our best to, whoever's applying, just have them apply and we'll start the interview process. Thank you, Carolyn. Okay. So we are on to, I'm just looking at my papers here. We're on to our next agenda, we're zooming right along on our Teams meeting. That was supposed to be a joke, but fiscal year 2022 budget policy discussion. This is a review of Chatham 365 priorities for budgetary and annual town meeting concerns. This is from our Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. Jill just and Alex just brought themselves forward for the discussion. Do you want to kick this off, Jill?
Sure. So as we're getting to our final steps in the FY22 budget process with regard to the operating budget, Alex wanted to just present a status of where we are. And then we had remembered too, that while you finished your goal-setting session, we did want you to take a look at the Chatham 365 priorities again, since we last looked at them right before the COVID shutdown had hit us. So we thought in fairness to that, as we mentioned at the budget summit, to take a look at that. But first, I think that Alex is going to go through, and a lot of this is in the human services budget, and happy to answer any questions when she's done.
Okay. Thank you, welcome, Alex.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jill. Yes, what I've presented tonight is just some of the recommendations from the Chatham 365 as in regards to the FY 2022 budget and informing the budget for going forward for the May town meeting. So we looked at the recommendations from the Chatham 365 and the items that have a direct impact on the budget. And as Jill mentioned, a lot of those have to do with the human services budget. And as we heard from a member of the public, one of those was the childcare voucher program. And we've recommended, again, the childcare voucher program be pulled out of the human services budget as it has in this current fiscal year as a standalone article moving forward. So looking at the board's goals and objectives, we looked at the Chatham 365, the board had directed, vetted and reviewed those and ranked those from on a scale of one to five. And looking at those items, as I said, for the FY 2022 budget, most of them have to do with childcare and affordable housing. So in your packet, we've noted the childcare voucher program for assistance to the public for $75,000, which will be managed currently by Montemoi Community Services. So we've looked to fund that again at that same level of $75,000, which equates to approximately one penny on the tax rate, just for informational purposes. The other items under the human services budget that support families and children in Chatham are the Montemoi Community Services, a separate line item. And they're requesting an increase of $25,000 for FY 2022. So going up from $165,000 to $190,000. The Children's Center by Hesch, $5,000. And then Food for Kids, which we funded two years ago, was not funded for this current fiscal year as they did not put in a request for proposals for $3,000. So those are the three that are direct impacts for families and children in the FY 2022 human services budget or standalone article as the childcare voucher will be. Just to note that the childcare voucher program was reviewed by the Human Services Committee and they are supporting the recommendation of $75,000 moving forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And note that the total for the human services budget is requested $359,956 without the childcare voucher program, but that does include $4,000 for the Cultural Council, which is usually included in that article as a regular funding.
Okay. Questions for Alex on the childcare voucher and the human services budget? Any comments? Any? I think, I guess, I would say that I think it's really important that we're supporting families and year-rounders during this, especially during this time. And if we can, if the town, a town meeting has a flavor for it, I'd like to support these, these two items wholeheartedly. Montemoi Community Services does a lot of, a lot of good work for our community. And I, I see, I personally don't have a problem with the increase in the budget. I, I'm mindful of what our impacts are going to be with COVID. I mean, we certainly are going to have some costs associated to that that are going to really be stunning at the end of the day. But I think if we're looking at some of the priorities we need to do in order to support the people in this community, I think it is in these two respects. So I just, any other comments from the board on that? Jeff?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just echo you, what you just said. I mean, I just, I think it's very well said and I'm fully supportive of both these increases. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, this is Peter. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also agree. And you kind of, you kind of wonder, is it enough? But there are other opportunities, you know, within, within Chatham. But it's the right step forward. It's something we should probably continue to look at over the next year, you know, even another, other ways to support our families.
Certainly, and I think that, you know, any indication of what's happening in this community right now, you just have to look at the COVID, the coronavirus relief fund, having raised almost a half a million dollars and spent almost two-thirds of that already, probably more than two-thirds for families in town. That's telling that there's a need here in the community to support each other. Is there any other, anything more that you wanted to add to this, Alex, as you go forward? Or is that simply just that piece?
Well, Madam Chair, thank you. Yes, there are some other items that Chatham 365 did highlight in regards to families. I think there was a comment about the website, which is currently underway with the upgrade of the website, so I wanted to point that out as well. Some of the other items we're looking at, and COVID did delay some of these items, such as the, a joint Harwich-Chatham beach sticker for year-round residence. So we've, you know, we'll probably pick that up this time of year. But again, with COVID hitting in the summer and not knowing what was going to happen with the beaches, all that got put on hold. Some of these items, you know, the town doesn't have much control over, but, you know, we will work with the community as a partner to see what we can do. You know, looking at first-time home buyers programs and down payment, we do have an old article, a CPA article back from, I think it was 2006, which I have to, yeah, May 8, 2006 was $130,000 for first-time home buyers, and there's still some money remaining in that article. So we will research that and we'd never close that out because, again, I tend to keep all the affordable housing items under the CPA appropriations open for future use. And this is one that is available. So we have to look at the, do more research on that, but I wanted to let you know that that is available out there. Some of the other items that we included in the staff report was, again, due to COVID and possibly including a standalone article to fund COVID-related items, as we reported earlier on in the meeting. Because we've spent a lot of money on COVID items that probably will not be reimbursed and we expect to continue some of those prior to and even possibly after there is a vaccine available because we don't know if everyone will be vaccinated and we need to be proactive. So we're looking at including a line item as a standalone article to fund COVID-19-related items. So that's really all I have right now. We'll continue to update the board as we move through the budget cycle with any items that have to do with the 365 recommendations as well as other recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Peter, your hand is up?
Dean was before me.
Oh, Dean, I'm very sorry. Go ahead, Dean.
Thank you. Alex, in your memo, you say that the CPA articles are due in mid-January. Do we have any sense of the breakdown of the requests, particularly with respect to affordable housing? I know there's $100,000 that automatically goes into the affordable housing component. And then last year, I think we had about a $500,000 additional or $400,000 additional came in from CPA. Is there something similar this year? Approximating that?
Yes, we did appropriate $500,000 for FY 2021 to the Affordable Housing Trust. There is a request, again, as you state, normally we take whatever is the statutory minimum, the 10%, to go to the Affordable Housing Trust. It's also, we're waiting to see if Habitat will request, and we expect a request to come in for the Habitat properties on George Rider Road South. So they will be requesting funds for that. Those are the ones that I know about. We have not received very many. We received one historic application at this time, and I believe the Bike Ways Committee will be requesting funds under the Recreation category.
Who made the request for the $500,000 last year of the CPA?
That came from the Community Development Department, Ally Sabatino, who was on this call. I don't know if she'd like to speak to that.
Her hand is raised. Ally, you want to speak to that, please?
Thank you so much. Yes, we are planning on putting in another request. I do believe it will be more than $100,000. I'm not sure exactly how much yet, but we will put in another request. And then an additional request that we're hoping to put in as well is to continue funding our housing coordinator. And that was in the amount of $30,000.
Well, thank you, Ally. I appreciate that. I guess what I wanted, and I remember when we had a conversation about this at a Selectmen's meeting some months ago, Dr. Selden, who chaired the CPC at one time, said that if the town, you know, really wanted to make a big push on affordable housing, we could spend as much as $700,000 out of the CPA monies. I mean, that could be a determination that the town could make. And, you know, we just heard from Brett Tully earlier and others in this meeting tonight about the significance, importance of affordable housing, not to mention attainable housing, which we, for which we can't spend CPA funds. I, I just would like to suggest that the Selectmen might want to provide some impetus for a very substantial contribution over to the Affordable Housing Trust from the CPA because, you know, these, as Mrs. Roosevelt used to say, this is no ordinary time. And I think it's really important that we take advantage of, Peter's old enough to remember that. Smiling. I think both of us were born after her. But I, I just think we have that fund and, yeah, it's nice to have these other requests. They're important too, but I think there's been a lot of comment over the year, recent years, that some of the projects that are funded are a little on the thin side. And I think affordable housing is, is a much, has a much stronger pull for the attention and, and support of the public. So I just throw that out for, for discussion.
I think that that's a pretty good discussion. I, I believe that we're, you know, you're absolutely right, Dean, this is extraordinary times. And if there aren't as many applications going forward into, into the CPC, you know, requests, that we do ask and request that we prioritize that money as much as possible and capitalize on it. Our Director of Community Development has her hand raised, so I just wanted to get some feedback from her if possible. Katie?
Sure, Madam Chair, thank you very much. So it is our intent to request the $500,000 at, at the minimum to go to the trust for the next round. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that. It was, we assumed that at our next trust meeting, we were going to request information from the trust itself as to whether or not they wanted us to request additional funds, but we didn't anticipate that we would request at least the $500,000.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Peter and then Jeff.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Dean mentioned.
Oops, we lost. We lost Peter, so I'll go to Jeff and then hopefully Peter will come back to us.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Madam Chair. I had a little chill go down my spine when I heard Mr. Castro quoting Eleanor Roosevelt. I thought hell had frozen over. But anyway, that, that being, that being said, I, I go back to what Mr. Tully said about being bold, and I think 500 grand is the same we did last year. And I would suggest perhaps we should converse with the, with our newly formed nine-member committee and ask, you know, what they're seeking. I would also like Alex's input on what the role forward of the monies in the, in the trust fund would be, should we have other asks funded like Habitat for Humanity? And then we had other sources of income, such as another $500,000 or north of $500,000 tranche from the, from the CPA fund. So I just kind of want to know where the trust kind of lands. Because I think we have, you know, in the, in our back pocket or in the back of our minds, some other things we'd like to do. And it's important for us to know, you know, how many, how many funds we have to play with, or could put to use, I should say.
Jeff, I'd prefer to quote Margaret Thatcher, but she didn't.
Oh, I'm surprised.
Don't I know it? Good quote, Dean, good quote.
Thank you.
Did you have a question for Alex? Was that a question? Jeff?
Peter.
Oh, Peter.
Oh, yeah, I'm back. I don't know what happened. I dropped right off. But in any case, I was going to say that, well, actually now I can say it, both Dean and Jeff kind of said what I'd, I'd like to say. Let me add just one other thing. I support everything that they were saying. When you look at the 365 recommendations, the, the good news is, and I hope everybody's listening, our 365 group and the priorities that came out are something that we're going to continue to look at. I know that the Madam Chair is, is doing that. And I think, I think the whole board is taking this seriously. The one thing I wanted to mention is that I was waiting to get an email about how I prioritized, but I didn't get any, which is, I was happy understanding. This is a priority for this year. And as we move ahead and we move out of COVID, there's a number of things I'd like to do on here also, but it's not a priority for right now. I think Brett made a good comment about family. I think Brett made a good comment about family, taking care of families, taking care of our school. Don't give up on, on a school. I, I agree with that. And, and also our family housing. But that's, that, I think that hopefully we'll be able to find funding, balance it for all of the things that we need within, within reason, because we do have a large senior population also. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alex, was there any follow-up to Jeff's?
I can get the balance that's in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, too. I don't have it right now with me, but I will get that to you along with any recommendation that comes in for additional funding from the CPC. The CPC is looking to meet very shortly. They've reached out, so they're looking to plan meetings in advance of their deadline on January 15th for project applications.
Okay. Is that enough to go on for, for now? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alex. All right, our next agenda item is, our last agenda item is consider prohibition of sales of nip bottles. And this was of agenda item request from Selectman Dinkins. He requests the board to discuss the possibility of a prohibition of the sale of nips, which is a 50-milliliter alcohol beverage. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff for, for discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this is the result of my taking a walk sometimes, or what I call, you know, a jog in the morning along Route 28, and counting nip bottles during that, during that excursion, those excursions. And they're plentiful, and they're unsightly, and so this, this is not, my wanting to put this as an agenda item is not so much as a, as wanting to ban nip bottles, although that's a possibility because other towns are doing that, but it's really borne out of frustration of the fact that we've got such, you know, such a littering issue of these, of these nip bottles. And, you know, and it's hard to change behaviors, you know, with respect to this stuff, but we got a problem with nip bottles everywhere in this town. Every, every time you go along a public roadway, especially roadways that are near liquor stores, there's nip bottles thrown up, being thrown. So other towns have prohibited the sales of nip bottles. I don't mean to think that we're going to come to any kind of decision or vote, even a recommendation tonight, but I, I do want to engender and to start a discussion about what to do with why, what I see to be the proliferation of, of these nip bottles throughout town. And I can comment as well on folks that walk the beaches in the town, and most notably Hardings and elsewhere, but just the amount of plastic all through, all, all up and down our beaches is, is extraordinary. And it's, it's just unfortunate and untoward and unwanted. And there are certain people in town that make it their, their duty, they don't work for the town, they just go clean up the beaches all the time. And there's people out there all the time cleaning up our beaches. They're not, they're not paid. But there aren't people doing that on the roadways. And I tell you, it's, it's not good. And just my short little jaunt, you know, counting up to 20 nip bottles along the side of the road is just, it's bad. So I throw it out for some discussion. I'm not all, you know, I'm not all hell-bent on banning, however, I think that's a tool in our toolbox. You know, some folks have suggested taxing the bottles, and I don't know if that really gets rid of the behavior. I'm looking to get rid of, you know, having a nip and then chucking it out the window. So I opened up discussion for the board, and then I know that it's, there are surrounding towns, bordering towns on the lower and outer Cape that are, they're talking about this as well. I know the town of Thalmud and the town of Mashpee have banned the sale of nip bottles. Each town has done, has taken an approach of doing that via the licensure mechanism and/or legislative mechanism. I don't have a recommendation this evening, nor do I, you know, I'm clear to, want to opine on that this evening, but I do want to throw it out for a conversation for the board and for the public, should they be willing or wanting to weigh in. So that's what I got.
Thank you, Jeff. I, I do want to also add in that in light of a presentation made by the Selectmen's Association, the Cape and Island Selectmen's Association, Municipal Association, meeting last month, that representatives from Brewster, Harwich, Chatham, and Orleans Select Boards did have a discussion to talk about making this approach happen or discuss it in a more regional aspect. So each town has sort of taken on a scope of this work to, to bring this to the forefront this year. I don't think anybody expects that we would make a decision on this and expect something to happen if it was to, a vote to approve a ban happen immediately, because there is obviously a financial impact to people that have stock in their stores and whatever. We did hear from, I got two emails today. One person who was in favor of it, having witnessed exactly what Selectman Dinkins did, the beach cleanups, working along the roadways, walking along the roadways and cleaning up, and, and the, the some problem that is, that's happened here. And then we heard from a, a business owner of, of a liquor store who was opposed to this. And I sent those emails around to each of you to, to talk, to look at and review. So I think we're opening up the discussion tonight. I don't think anybody expects to make any decisions, but we want to have a community conversation in regard to this. We do want to hear from the businesses at some point. They sent us an email. We have another meeting, if not, but for right now, let's hear from our crew. So Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I'm kind of, I, kind of with, with, with Jeff. Just a personal experiences, I, when I first moved here permanently, got involved with, you know, doing something for the community, we ended up going a lot of different places across the Cape. And it was one I remember distinctly is the canal cleanup, you know, walk along the canal and kind of clean up, and you're right, there were nip bottles all over the place. It was a, and, and, and we filled bags and bags of these things with these, with the bottles. And it was also along the different roads between Brewster and, and Harwich. So it's a problem, it is a problem regionally. And I thought the business owner that sent us a, a, you know, his, his thoughts, I thought he made a very good point, you know, i- it's a littering problem, but it's not as simple as that. It's just too easy to get it out. And I, and I agree, it is a littering problem, and he has a, he has a business concern. I'm glad that we're not going to try and make a decision tonight. I don't think we should. I think we need to get a little bit more information. I think also a little, it ought to be more regional. But plastics are a major problem, and especially small ones like that. So I, I, I'm going to take Cory's turn. I have an open mind on this, and, and I still want to consider it, but it is, it is a real problem, and they're hard to see until they start, until they're all over. Do we get a, you know, a, a littering crews to pick up stuff? I'm, I'm not sure, but that won't stop personal behavior, a personal responsibility. And, and that's where it is. I mean, it's just too easy to throw these things out, but at the same time, you know, it's just too easy to stick it in your pocket and then put it in a waste can. So that's, that's all I'll say right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Cory, thoughts?
Well, I guess I have an open mind. Thanks, Peter. No, there, there are, there are many layers to this conversation. Obviously, environmental layer, completely understand that the supply is to, and yet anything made of plastic these days, frankly. You know, we see that in our, our beaches and our waterways, so, but we, we definitely need to look at the societal, this impact, you know, who's, who's buying the nips? Why are they being thrown away? You know, if we were to ban a 50-milliliter container, will, 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 will 100-milliliter containers become more popular, 500-milliliter, you know, et cetera, et cetera? So I, I'm very conscious of the impact on the small business. You know, there's multiple sides to this conversation. If, if any level of ban were to take place for nips on the Cape, the only way to, to do it would be a regional approach, because it's, if you, if you ban it in one town and not the other, you know what's going to happen. So that's the only viable way of, of tackling that for, for, you know, if that was the, the path, you know, with the citizens and the town wanted to take. You know, it's, it's a, there's a lot of data that, I'm not a doctor, but people are buying nips for various reasons, and I think we're going to need to factor all that in. And, you know, what, what are the other layers of that conversation? It's not just about litter, it's not just about economics, but it's also about impacts on, you know, individual, you know, people's health and well-being. So open to all information. There's a lot of data that needs to be provided that I don't have, but I'm more than willing to have this conversation.
There's lots, a lot of the difference, people that were involved in that call started to sort of jointly gather up information, and hopefully we'll be able to share more of it around for everybody from the various different towns and get an update on efforts. Dean, your hand was raised.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I guess I will join the open-minded caucus here. I, I thank Jeff for putting this on the agenda and, and for the manner in which he presented it, because, as Cory said, there are multi, multiple layers here. I was shocked to learn that the city of Chelsea, of all places, has banned nips. That, that really stunned me, would have, that there'd be a pro-nip constituency up there. I also thought that the two emails that we received were very eloquent and, and thoughtful on both sides. And a couple of years ago, I, when I was Chair of the Board, we put on the agenda, we put on the requested agenda items, I think it's still there, inviting the exec from the, I think it's from the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission to come and talk with us, because, we haven't done that yet, because we heard a presentation at the Selectmen's Association about the seriousness of the alcohol issue on Cape Cod. It's, it's more pervasive and more serious than opioids, from the presentation I remember hearing. So there is, there is that societal, that public health concern. We did support legislation that I think imposed some restriction on the, the sale of nip bottles. I, I don't think it's been enacted. But at the same time, and I'm, I am going to sound a little bit like Mrs. Thatcher, I, I do believe in free enterprise, and I, you know, I do get concerned. I read where Selectman McCaskill and Harwich voiced the concern that every time there's a problem, we want to ban a product. And, and I, I don't think that's necessarily the right way to go. I appreciate that we, there is a regional or sub-regional approach in, in play. Perhaps we might want to consider, I'm not going to offer a motion tonight, but we might want to consider creating a subgroup of interested Chatham people, including both environmental folks and, and others, business people, to examine this issue more closely and come back to the Board of Selectmen with a recommendation. But I, I think it's a conversation and discussion that we should continue to engage in, having regard for all the different considerations. But the underlying issue is, what Peter said, it's a, it's a littering problem, but there, it, there's also a drinking issue underneath as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay. Any final thoughts? I, I don't think we're in, have any flavor to take any actions, but I think that Dean's recommendation of perhaps calling on community members to help find a solution to this problem would be a very helpful avenue for us to pursue. I did want to note that we did, Shawna did reach out to the five package store license holders, and some of them are on the call tonight. And Jeff, did you want some final thoughts?
Yeah, no, I, I also read both those letters to the board, and they were both very well-written and very thoughtful. So there are really two distinct sides to this issue. I, I get it. And again, I'm not all hell-bent for a ban, however, I think we have a problem, and I think plastics along the roadways are very unsightly, and I don't think it's healthy, and I don't think it's healthy for the environment or our people or our citizens. So I'm not a, you know, I don't have a whole lot of preconceived notions, however, you know, even the thought of a ban, again, is borne out of the frustration with behaviors that lead to littering along our beautiful roadways and beaches, et cetera. So I think we ought to plug into the regional effort, Shereen, to your point, and to Cory's point. I think so, to the degree we can do that. If you want to assign someone, or if someone wants to volunteer, if I can do it via Zoom or Teams, I'd be more than willing to do that, or if you want to do that, that's great too, but you, you, I defer to your wisdom and to the rest of the board's wisdom on that one.
Jeff, if you want to continue the approach of, of working with the regional team that's been discussing that, I'll, I'll definitely defer to you on that.
Do that, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll let the, let those organizers know that. I think their next plan of approach was to sort of report back in January, early January as to where each of the towns are and what their, what their action plans were to go forward. So that might be a good timing on that. So thank you for that. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay. All right, great. All right, good. Okay. So we'll just move on if there isn't any further discussion from the board on that matter, which brings us to our, our last item tonight, which is, again, public comments on any business agenda items that we discussed tonight. And so if anybody wants to raise their hand to make a comment or have a question, they can do so now. Anybody on a call that wants to speak to any of the matters can speak out now, and I'll take your name, and then we can move on. Okay, I'm not seeing any comments for up. Nope, I don't think so. Carolyn, yeah, Carolyn, your hand's up. Does that mean you, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I was, I was all done with the meeting, but I, I heard this last part about the nips, and I just had a suggestion. How about if, rather than ban the nips, to buy a nip, you need to bring in an empty nip?
I find that to be a very clever solution for our.
So they won't be thrown out the window if they need them to buy another one, so that was my suggestion. All right.
Thank you for that, Carolyn. Ingenuity, right there. All right, I'm seeing no other comments tonight. I do want to thank the staff who prepared and supported this meeting for us, and I'll accept a motion to adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Peter, we'll take a roll. Jeff?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay, we have, the meeting has adjourned. I just want to say, stay safe and be well. Please, please, please wear your masks and, and think about your neighbors and your family and your friends in the next couple of weeks, and as you plan your holiday season. Okay, good night, Chatham. Take care.
Good, everybody.